I'll wait on my chalk.
Okay.
All right, we're ready to go.
Okay. Get my Milky Way wrapper on.
We'll go ahead and resume our, excuse me, our work session at 1:41 PM. And we'll move into our five-year work plan updates with Barbara Dobbins and Mr. Knight. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Prestapino. We're here to update you on some changes to the five-year work plan that we've made since the last presentation. But before I turn it over to Mr. Knight, I want to talk about why we've made the changes and how we've determined those changes. So first, the why. So as we've previously discussed in other presentations, we are exploring a loan for $52 million to provide funding to school-related maintenance projects such as HVACs, re-roofs, and flooring, et cetera. This will allow, if the board so chooses, again, if the board so chooses, this will allow the reallocation of millage money to be used to build a district office that will be located on this site or possibly located on this site, that will also consolidate other departments and offices into a central district office.
Ms. Dobbins, let's stop you real fast.
Yes.
I need you to, one more time, real slowly and clearly, restate that we're not reallocating loan money.
I will be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For the record.
For the record. Yes, sir, you got it. So by making these changes, it will allow us to seek a loan for school-related, much-needed maintenance, which Mr. Knight will present, projects. So therefore, if the district of the school board so chooses, it will allow the board to reallocate millage funding to pay for a new district office, possibly on this site, which will consolidate multiple offices. As you know, we have offices over at MTI, we have them scattered about, and this gives one central office to be built. Again, reallocate millage money for that building. So that is the why. So how did we prioritize this list? Well, first and foremost, it comes down to safety and health. We want to make sure that we have, and this mainly relates to HVAC, that we are running air quality control, and that leads into environmental climate control and ensuring that we have healthy air to breathe. So those were some of our highest, some, a lot of times, we get into old HVAC systems that are creating, they're high stress because they're old, they're creating a lot of condensation, which in turns makes moisture on ceiling tiles, which in turns create a health issue and so forth. So, so health and safety is number one. The other part is looking at our high-maintenance units that are costing us in maintenance upkeep. And just like we have a boneyard for buses, we also have a boneyard of parts. And what we are starting to see is, aside from, you know, issues with shipping and getting parts, we are also having a lot of our HVAC systems that are now no longer made. And so now we cannot find parts because they don't make the parts anymore. And now our boneyard of parts is running thin. And there are literally systems out there that we are piecemealing together to keep going. So it, those were all placed on the high priority. We also did inspections of our sites. So we've walked every school site. Our technical services department walked every site to look at flooring and then prioritize based on carpeting needs and things like that, which schools are the worst. And based on those inspections, we've come up with a priority list of flooring. We average, in the past, without this, this plan, we average one school per year of flooring. And if you imagine, we have 50 schools, that doesn't even account for all the others. So this will help us in that area. So we're also having a shift in priorities in looking at making sure that we put taking care of our current facilities first versus building new construction. So you're going to see a shift in this plan from new construction, our permanent construction, into funding maintenance. And, and that is the, how we prioritized piece. So with that said, I'm going to, at this point, turn it over to Mr. Knight to go over the presentation of changes.
Ms. Dobbins, before that occurs, I think it's just critical for the community to understand how we arrived at this point. If you would just briefly review the funding sources that we had in the past, if you can, and this may be leaking over into our CFO's area, but we didn't get this way overnight. And we've, we have just suffered some incredible funding losses. I think that has, that has brought us to this point. And I think it's really important for the community to understand because I'm getting questions about, well, what about the lottery money? That's one I hear. You know, what about, we say internally, what about the PICO dollars? What about the taxes on landlines that went towards capital projects? So if you feel comfortable sharing, this is a good time to do it, and it may help dispel some of the concerns that are already circulating in the community with good reason. Because when, when you don't know the background, it makes it very difficult to wrap your head around what we're looking to potentially do.
Absolutely. Great questions and a great suggestion. I will do a high level because I'm dipping into our CFO's who knows it like the back of her hand. And I'll also tell you the things in my short time and, and my newest position on what I've seen and heard as well. So first of all, you've mentioned PICO dollars, which is that public education capital outlay. We have, we received zero dollars from the state, I'm going to repeat that, we received zero dollars from the state in PICO funds. That was the main source of funding in years past for construction and maintenance. Prior, we also had a half-cent sales tax, and that allowed us to build new schools, new wings. When you have a half-cent sales tax, it also helps us with the navigation of state requirements for building educational facilities. So when we raise the local funds, we have more flexibility in building wings and schools versus using millage money. With, with things like that, when we use our, our millage money to build those schools, then we are very restricted on what we can build. And it doesn't let us add the necessary things we want or what we need in a school. And, and we kind of see that now with the North Marion High School discussion. So you, you take the PICO dollars, not funding, you take the, use, having to use the capital outlay millage money that becomes more restrictive in what we can do, and then not having any other revenue source to help fund. It puts us in a bind. So, so we have over 500 million projects that we need to do facility-wise, whether it be new construction, whether it be renovation, that we are unable to fund. We, we fund less than 20%, right at 20%. But there are things that we don't even account specifically in depth in our five-year plan, which will, is, will be a focus for me this year to put in our five-year plan that we haven't put for. We've put some athletic facilities in the five-year plan, but there's more than just the ones listed. And until I have a year to completely review and do our walkthroughs, we will build an even bigger. And so what that means is our, our costs are greater than what we're saying. We're not funding what we need. And so with that, we get into old buildings, we get into maintenance issues because we, we're, we're not able to keep up.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that explanation. It's really helpful because I've also been hearing that we have the one-mill funding referendum in place that our citizens and taxpayers have so generously, you know, renewed, first approved and then renewed, that is due to sunset in 2022. Can any of those dollars go towards any of these projects?
You're referring to millage, correct?
Yes, the one-mill funding referendum that we currently have in place.
I really would like our CFO to answer that versus myself, but I, I do believe, yes, but I would want her to verify that.
Okay, okay. And, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask you a question that was outside of, of your area. And getting the confirmation from our CFO, if, whenever she's available to pop in, would really be important because my understanding is the answer to that question is absolutely not. It's, it's encumbered, and we have a Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee that oversees the spending to make sure that we're not spending it on capital projects. So your area is, is the construction and maintenance side, and I'm sure you would love to have some of that money.
I would love to, yes.
And, and we would love to let you have it because the need is so great, but we also have needs on the operational side. So there's just so much to school funding, and I'm glad that you mentioned that, Board Member Cummings, because surely this is something that's going to continue to be reported on, and, and this is carrying forward that conversation in the spirit of informing the community so that when they share our concern, their concerns with each of us as board members, we'll also be able to communicate to them exactly what the bottom line is when it comes to these funding sources.
Right. And I didn't know if we had leeway in language with that or anything, which kind of makes...
Yeah, and I didn't mean to trip you on that one.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was the right thing to ask. And because I, I don't really think the community really knows how this whole process is working and really how sick this building is, and why we even had those discussions in the past concerning making some changes here, so.
Well, we have the right person in the room that can really answer that question.
That's right, that's right.
She doesn't know the question.
It was regarding the current one-mill funding referendum and whether or not it can be used for capital projects, repairs, maintenance, building.
We can use those dollars for operating expenditures. There was an opportunity to create, I think it was a building at, what was it, Westport High, and the attorney at the time told us, this millage is for operational costs, not capital. So we had to stick to operational costs only.
Right. And I think we made it very clear in our ballot language as well for the referendum that it was to be used for class size, art, music, PE, career and technical education, and school safety, and media.
Specifically within the language, right?
Specifically within the ballot language. So that, we were just talking about the importance of, as we be open, as we continue on this conversation, how important it is for the community to really understand how we got to this point, number one, with all of our maintenance issues, and, and also the importance of understanding that there may be $600 million, but it can't be used for, in ways that we would love for it to be used for because it's encumbered and can only be spent on certain things. And that, to me, is a critical part of this conversation as, as a citizen. You know, I've been around here long enough when, when the new, the new, which is now an older Forest High School, but the one on Merricamp Road, and I think that opened in 2005 or the conversation went back that far. And at that time, the old Forest High School was deemed in need of too much repair to make it worth repairing it. And yet we've continued to cobble it along and, and do the best we can. So now, it's almost 2022, and, and here we still are. So thank you for, for popping in, and I just think it provides that foundation for this conversation that the community greatly needed to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my apologies, I kept hearing "millage," not "referendum."
I know, and then it's property, yeah.
My cross in my brain. Any other questions?
No, thank you so much.
Mr. Knight.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Mr. Prestapino, Mr. Powers, and Dr. Gullett. Good to see you all. Fill in the nuts and bolts for you as far as the update. You may recall that this past summer, in both July and August, we talked about the five-year district facilities work program. And just to recap, it happens once a year, or if the board amends their work program, and it follows your survey. So the survey, our last survey was approved this spring. This is the first five-year work program since the survey is approved. It'll be five years before a survey is approved again. So in September, the board approved our version of the work program. And so what we have upcoming is the official submission of that work program to the state. It's done on a particular state form, which was not available when the board approved it in September 14th. And so we will be going back to receive that official approval through regularly scheduled board action. And of course, today is about just sharing the changes since the board saw the July and August presentation so that the board understands what projects were shifted in order to make all this happen with this loan. And so we are scheduling a public hearing for December 14th on the work program, and then we will, I will submit it electronically to the state the very next day. Excuse me, so we have a couple of color codes so you can follow, try to make things easy. There are four real categories here. Projects that were not funded previously that are now funded if this loan goes through. There are some projects that we have unfunded since the last time we spoke in, in order to capture that many projects that we want to try to do through this loan. And then the balance that we're already funded are now going to be changing a funding source. It hasn't happened yet, but it is proposed that we change that funding source to the loan. And then finally, in the meantime, because costs rise all the time, we saw fit to update a couple of projects to make it more current so you weren't approving something that was six months old in terms of projection. And so that's what these color codes mean. We'll go in order. First up, in purple, are all the projects that were previously not funded in the work program. Most of them are heating, ventilating, and air conditioning. There are several roofs there as well, and they are now going to be funded in the work program. And the reason why they went from unfunded to funded is, number one, because that's what the loan is all about, to try to maximize the amount of heating, ventilating, and air conditioning and other projects to do. That loan will allow us to do this, but we have to take them out of funded/unfunded status to put in funded right now as millage so when the loan goes through, we're flip-flopping and swapping the, the funding sources, and we're not having to try to capture projects that weren't previously funded. Because the goal would be to divert that money for the district office. So then here are the projects that we unfunded in order to capture about $52-plus million worth of projects to do. And all of these are new facilities. They are additions, or they are art, music suite additions. And the whole thought process is, well, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning and roofing affect kids now and the facilities that exist. So if we go construct buildings and don't take care of the existing schools, fine, we have a new wing, but we have major problems with the main infrastructure of the schools. So the goal, of course, is to stopgap that and take care of the issues that remain now and are projected to be a problem in the future. So in order to fund the ones in purple, we took these off the table as far as a funded project. So then next, we have, these are the projects that the board already saw in the summer that were funded, and we simply color-coded them because they, along with the ones in purple, will be part of that loan should that loan go through. And that's what's going to free up that capital money for other uses, most notably something in the district in terms of new offices. And finally, we have a couple of projects, less than $1 million worth that we upgraded because these are the very first projects that will show up on the radar in 22, 23. And we saw fit to go ahead and make the move now to update the costs because the costs are changing, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't start that process with old numbers. And so what this really means when you shake it all up is the previously unfunded, now-funded is just over $31 million. We unfunded just about that same amount so that we could have that money available. We have another $27,749 previously funded under millage that will be part of that loan once that goes through. And then finally, we have a little bit of money that we moved around to supplement those early projects in the next fiscal year. So if you think about this in terms of the big picture, once this five-year work program goes through next year, if the loan goes through, we will rebuild that work program to show specifically the funding for that. We can't do that yet because we don't actually have the loan. And so I know that was short and sweet, kind of concise to the point, hopefully, certainly able to answer any questions that you might have, and I'll be happy at your will to go back over if needed.
Thank you. I have one quick thing you, you mentioned, and just, you know, informally moving money around. What does that specifically mean? And, and I just want to confirm that when, when funding is shifted, we're talking about a process that is 100% legal, 100% appropriate. I think it's really important to make sure that that elephant in the room has a voice.
Sure, absolutely. Well, first of all, the board is really only approving this fiscal year's budget. Everything in years two, three, four, and five is a projection because we don't actually have those funds yet. We are projecting we're going to get $20 million in millage funds for next year. We're projecting we'll be able to spend that $20 million on these four, five, six, eight projects. And so it's really, if you think of it in terms of, it's an approval plus an acceptance of what the plan is going to be. We amend it again next year, in the next year. So every single year, we amend this plan because we don't get exactly what we thought we would get. And of course, priorities occur to where we can't necessarily do this one ahead of this other one. So in terms of moving the money, what we've really done is simply moved it on a spreadsheet. This year has been locked in, it's the exact same thing the board already saw. So in years two, three, four, and five, what we've done is said, rather than do three or four or five additions, we're going to take that money and fund all the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning projects we currently cannot do. So that when we get this loan, that money goes straight into those projects because they're funded, and that frees up all that capital to be used by the board at its will for district offices, among other things. And so if you don't present it and move that money that way, what happens is you borrow money, you don't have a set list of projects to put it on, and you're funding projects that don't have a fund source that can be reused towards district offices. So I'll just give you some, for instance, if you borrow $50 million and you only have 20, you've got $30 million non-funded, you only have 20 you can use for your district offices, not 50. So we had to set it up to where there's $52 million funded this year, or at least on paper funded, years two through five haven't happened. So if the loan does go through, that loan will cover that $52 million, and any funds that were dedicated to those projects become available to the board for their district spaces. Hope that made sense. Not an accountant, but...
It is, it's complicated, and, and it can be tough to follow, and that's what just makes it really important to present it in a way more than once so that, again, the board 100% understands, and, you know, let alone the rest of the community. Because what we do is, is a big deal to, to people, and, and how we do it should be an even bigger deal.
Yeah, the, the overall outcome simply is going to be that when the board borrows, if the board borrows this money, is we're going to significantly increase the amount of heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, and roofing projects and flooring projects across the district that we would otherwise not get done. And so that's the bottom line, is that...
Right.
The loan is being proposed to do significant things at schools that would take us 20, 30, or more years to accomplish otherwise, and we're going to try to do it in three or four or five. Because just to footnote on previous discussion about funding, it's been 15 years since this district got any PICO money for construction. And we have, we averaged between $5 and $10 million a year at that time, and we would collect $3 to $5 million worth of maintenance money. So if you look at it in terms of, we've lost $10 to $15 million a year for better than 10 years in a row, that's $100 to $150 million. Plus, the millage, when it was changed from two mills to 1.5, cost us another $8 to $10 million over the last 10 years. That's another $100 million that we are not... So picture what we could do if we had $200 million over that time. We wouldn't necessarily have to talk about trying to go borrow money to do projects that we maybe should have been able to do years ago and can't, and now they're very critical, or at least they will be in the next three to five years.
Did I just hear you say that over the past, I think you said 10 to 15 years, we've...
Lost almost 200.
Lost virtually 200, maybe even a little more than $200 million for being able to maintain our public schools?
Eight to 10 million a year from the millage and another 10-plus million a year from PICO. Yes.
That money would have went to capital.
Yes, it would have gone to capital.
Not to teacher salaries, but...
It would have gone strictly to buildings. It would have allowed us to build some things we need. It certainly would have allowed us to fix all the things we've got on this list that we just presented to you. And it would have bought buses, it would have paid for debt, would have done a number of different things.
And none of that money could go towards teacher salaries or all the other things that we would love to do for our employees because that's not allowed by state law.
Right. It is restricted to the facility itself, maintaining, operating, and upgrading those facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I'd like to add a couple of things because that was a great question that we want to be very clear about. One, this plan, line-by-line item on the whole year, five-year plan, has already been reviewed by our award-winning finance department, so we work very collaboratively with them. With that, the loan can only be spent on school-based projects. And that's why we have to go to a loan to catch up with that deficit we've had for so many years. A ancillary building, you cannot use those millage funds for an ancillary building such as a district office or, or a county office for, for other reasons. So it's not about switching money around, it's about, just about how we fund things. So we're going to take these lumps of projects that are school-related and fund them through a loan. Therefore, the millage money would then be able to be used for that district office. Just a little bit simpler way of saying it.
That's correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the clarity.
Any other questions?
Board?
It's crystal clear to me.
It's clear to me, awesome. Thank you for this presentation.
Yes.
And thank you for the color codes. It helped me see it.
Yeah. And just for additional clarification, I know that Ms. Dobbins mentioned athletic facilities, and, and so I know that there are a significant number of our middle schools that don't have air conditioning and the gymnasium. I know that there, well, frankly, this district hasn't done anything from an athletic facility work plan in a long time because obviously classroom space is where we need to ensure that we're investing those dollars. However, we also understand that large meeting spaces for our middle schools are, are helpful, and, and having gymnasiums with air conditioning would be helpful. Additionally, additional athletic opportunities, it helps keep kids in schools. And participating in a parent meeting or, I guess, a school advisory council meeting this week, just understanding that extracurricular activities, I should say athletics, but I'm actually going to say extracurricular activities, that there's value in understanding what that looks like for us as we forecast out. I understand where we are this year, but as we come back to this table next year and look at the additional year that we're adding on to the five-year work plan, it, it will be interesting to see if there are potential opportunities for us to also work in, in that vein, to, to see where else we could put some money and resources. And having the $200 million that the school district has not been able to capitalize on because of the two different issues that we've just discussed over the course of the last 10 to 15 years are why we have some of these issues that we have right now. So I, it's totally crystal clear to me what we need to do and, and where we're going with this. But just as a point of note, I, I do think that potentially in the future, if there's a way that we could look to ensuring that we're putting our resources in areas that are not just targeted to one specific sport or one specific school, but looking for the greater good for the greater whole of the, the student body, I think that'll be helpful.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. And, and this is a related topic while you're here, and it has to do with, one of, a concern that I do have with doing anything building right now is just the current state of supply chain and costs and that type of thing. And gosh, I, I want to think that things will begin to, to normalize and that we would, in any of our negotiations, would want to make sure that if some cost of things did end up going down significantly, that we would be able to benefit from that. Because, you know, to try to build, and I know we're years down the road, and, and just a rough estimate to, to move forward and, and bring a project like this to full build-out, we're talking several years anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay. And one of the reasons why I'm saying that is because of the concern about... And one of the reasons why I'm saying that is because of the concern about just current costs and inflation and that type of thing, although while interest rates are still good, getting the loan would be a good idea, because whatever details are involved in that, you know, how long we have to pay it back and that type of thing, to have that leeway to watch our market conditions in the building trades could be really helpful fiscally. I'm also thinking about the fact that we have such a disproportionate growth, you know, in our south areas of our schools. You know, we know they are continually overcrowded, you know, Highway two-hundred continues to explode creatively. And again, this is something that the community really needs to at least know the basics about, because, of course, we need another school down there. But yet, we've got schools north of town that are way under capacity, like Reddick Collier, for example. Evergreen is not operating at the moment, but we've got plans for that. It's a beautiful campus for kids. While we may end up, you know, I think Vice Chair King had a great suggestion, you know, months ago, about possibly using Evergreen for district staff. And that's something I would be open to, as long as we didn't do a lot of retrofitting for adults, and then find out as the northwest area begins to explode, which it likely will, that we're going to need that as a school again, and then spend all that money putting it back, so that it's appropriate for elementary school kids. So those are just some of the things that are on my mind. We always, and the reason why we're in this position at the district level is because we've done everything we could to maintain our schools for kids, and even that's been rough, when we've lost out on two-hundred million dollars. But I think it's really important for us, and again, you know, this is where feeling handcuffed is so frustrating, because there's that fish report, and there's that number of seats that you have to be able to justify for the state. We don't just get to decide to build a school because we feel like we need it when we have the money. Don't we sort of have to ask permission?
Yes.
You're allowed to, if the district uses only its own money, you can build things. The problem, you know, it's sort of like, sure, you can speed, but we didn't say you wouldn't go to jail if you were caught. So what happens is, you go ahead and build things, then you can't build the next school, because you can't justify it in your survey. Or they hold it against you in terms of counts, because you don't get paid for empty seats. You don't, the money follows the student, so if the student transfers, the money follows the student. It doesn't say at that school that was vacated, because population shifted. But you still have the same operational cost for that school. And so you do have to go back through a spot survey, and that's where you sort of have to pay the piper, so to speak. They don't allow school districts to build more than two classrooms over their max population. And we faced that at Wyamina Park, and we were pulling our hair out, trying to justify. The board at that time wanted to build two more rooms than we had a survey for. And the only reason to get around, only way we got around is we said, oh, well, we got portables with seats in them, those will be the ones we will off-campus. So it dropped our seat count to allow us to build those two rooms that the board had. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to do it, our money or not. And we were using our money at the time, too. So there are pitfalls, and there are some challenges having to go through approvals with the state. Even if there is a path, it's not necessarily completely clear and free.
Do you see a time or a path, even if it's, nothing is straightforward and simple anymore, it seems. But the need is certainly there in the south end, and we've got the Winding Oaks property, so at least we have that base covered. What would be the scenario where we would actually be able to build a school down there that we know we need?
Well, my first recommendation, of course, we have a brilliant mind in David Hurley, and he would need to do the study of the areas, because as you know, we have middle school DD. And then we see Liberty is overcrowded, and that area is booming and so forth. So we would need to do that study to find out, where do we put, where's our best return on an investment? Is it in, you know, the Shores area, or are we looking at the southeast area? So that would have to be done first. Without that study, we are not making an informed decision. From there, it's all about funding and the direction of the board. The funding is always going to be your barrier. We're having to borrow fifty-two million dollars just
To patch, to fix stuff.
Just to not even catch up on fifteen years of deficient funding from the state. So you have, you know, that loan ratio that we have to stay within. So would we have to borrow more money? You build a school, you're looking around sixty-one million dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that was our last cost out for middle school DD. And there's so many other factors to weigh in. Are you saving cost and transportation? I, you know, Mr. Hurley, he is going to present on Monday that same presentation he did back in April, which really talks about, how are we growing in Marion County? Where are we growing? Where are these permits for residents being allotted to, and what type of home is that? Is that senior citizen, where you're not really getting the enrollment? Is that more family, and we're going to have an increase in students? And if we're having an increase in students, then how does that impact our schools? And therefore, we make the informed decisions there. And that's also the ask, that local agreement is really about coming together, and if, before the county approves permits, we need to be able to have that conduit through Mr. Hurley to say, this is how it's going to impact our schools. And that's that re-establishment of that meeting. So those are the first steps. Do the study, find out where we truly need it, communicate with the city and the county to find out where their eyeing growth, and make the determination of where we need the school the most, and then solve the funding issue.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell, for, you know, just taking that initiative and running with it. We're all looking forward to that intergovernmental meeting on Monday. Hopefully, that will set the tone for more productive meetings like that moving forward, because things are happening so fast. And I think about what was, what was in April. You know, we're getting, first of all, four-eighty-four is exploding, we know that, because you can't even get off the interstate barely anymore, or back on it. And I imagine that's going to attract younger families. Plus, we have had a lot of families, I think, that are eyeing Florida and some of our southern states because of our school systems. So where before, a lot of our growth has been, you know, retirees that don't have kids in school, so it wouldn't impact school building, now the playing field may have already shifted, and we do need it, probably even quarterly updates on things like this.
And to your point, Chair Thrower, the county commission has actually now moved to, rather than once a month, planning and zoning meetings, they actually meet, I think, every time they have a county commission meeting to go into planning and zoning, and just approved another, I think, seven-hundred-plus homes just yesterday.
Yes.
Just, excuse me, just Tuesday. So thousands of homes, you know, at least permitted, that they're at least giving that authority to move forward, just within the last couple of weeks that we've been watching. And they're located in various parts of this county. Some they're approving, some they're not. And so I do think that this is a great time for us to have this meeting on Monday. And I know that we expressed in our legislative delegation meeting to our legislators also, that if COVID showed us any one thing, it is that face-to-face instruction is imperative. And so we asked them specifically, please start reinvesting in the infrastructure, to ensure that we can do that safely and effectively for our students. And so with the reduction in the funding that we've just gone over and over, but if they would be willing to do something at the state level to reinvest in infrastructure for us, that also would be a huge benefit.
Sure would, sure would. And the recession was so bad in Florida, especially around here, that it's understandable what had to happen, and the rollback of the millage, you know, things like that, were appropriate for the times, but times have changed. And I think that it's really important, even more critical now, to re-establish and strengthen these relationships between all of our government officials and agencies, so that everyone is aware of what our needs are, and that we're aware of what their, what their needs are, and what they're doing, and how we can work together. It could be something as simple as extending a road maybe another fifty feet, so that our buses aren't backed up on a roadway, you know, when they're trying to drop kids off because of these overcrowded schools and things like that. And it's amazing what can come from these conversations and partnerships. So I know I've spoken a lot during this section, but it's definitely been on my mind, and I know it's been on all of our minds, and it's good to get it out there. And I, my prayer is, is that the community will continue to become even more engaged. Ask the tough questions, because there are answers, and there is, and they're not simple. We wish they were.
Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the cause?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you so very much. Really appreciate it. All right, is there any public comment? Hearing none. I think I made it for every public comment today.
Good job.
I've implemented a new strategy. All right. We'll move on to board concerns. Anything from legal today, sir?
Not that I can think of at the moment. I think everything, I don't have any notes that would indicate that there's anything I haven't already discussed with you guys.
Okay, sounds good.
Inevitable place to be.
Yes, yes. And will you be joining us on Monday at the intergovernmental?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I thought so, but just wanted to confirm. I intend to just very briefly state that we were going to be meeting in January, can't remember the exact date of the work session, to talk about the funding referendum that's going to be sunsetting, and what we want to do and where we want to go with that. Obviously, all that conversation has to occur in the sunshine, and we have to come to consensus on what we're doing in the ballot language. But I think it's going to be important to at least share with all of our government entities that it is on our radar, it's going to be up for renewal in November, should we choose to put it on the ballot, not August, so that completely shifts the timeline compared to what people have been used to for the last almost eight years. So it'll be nice to have you, in case there's any specific legal questions. So, thank you, looking forward to that.
Our session date is January sixth.
January sixth, okay, great. Thank you. All right, Dr. Gouet.
Good afternoon. I do not have anything additional. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Press Patino.
Thank you.
All right, great. Cummings.
Hello.
All right, Vice Chair King.
I do. I don't know, I just want you to know, you'd be proud of me. I completed my ethics training and have my form right here.
Yes, I've got mine done, too.
It's submitted and everything, so I thought you'd be proud of that.
Proud of it.
And also, I just want to say that my thoughts and prayers are with Josiah Williams' family, Reddick Collier Elementary, as he was their student and friend out there. And again, you're just in my thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Board Member Campbell.
And I'll second that. I've thought a lot about that over the last, what, thirty-six hours or so that we've had since that, and also for the driver, because I can't imagine what that, the first responders, the folks who were, you know, saw it happen, and all of that. So certainly for this mother, and our thoughts and prayers are absolutely with that family. And yeah, I think that's all for today.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell, and we all certainly concur, and we are, one of the many best things about Marion County Public Schools is that we really are a family. We have a longstanding culture of being a family and really coming together. And when I stopped out at the Reddick compound yesterday, the driver was coming in to do her afternoon route, can you imagine, you know? And it was just amazing, as she was coming across the parking lot, one of the other drivers, you know, blew her a kiss and said, "Did you catch it?" And it was just so sweet, so sweet and so supportive. So, yes, we have incredibly challenging jobs, and you just really never know on a given day, the highs and the lows that are going to happen, and being together as a school family makes all the difference. And with that, that's really all I have for today, too. It's been another spirited and lengthy time. We had to take a little break to do some other things, and came back and finished everything up. I'd like to thank everyone for participating and for the wonderful presentations, and just the spirit of enthusiasm as we begin to ease more into a new normal. And please keep that going, and please keep doing everything you can to stay healthy for yourself and your family. We need all of you very much and appreciate you. All right, well, if there isn't anything else for the good of the cause, may I make a non-motion to adjourn, and we'll just say, we'll finish up at two-twenty-five PM. Thank you, everyone.